An open meeting posted over here in the corner right around the door is the actual open meeting act. If you would, I would ask that you would stand with us for just a moment of silence and as well, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Continuing with roll call.
Koi.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
Okay. Under action, I am going to ask for approval of the consent agenda with the deletion of item 15.
Motion, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second for approval of the consent agenda deleting item 15, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
As well, a request for approval of the full agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the full agenda as presented to you again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. We're going to move forward then with a public hearing at the request of Don Pfizer, Orange Development, for a zoning change from C1, R1, R3, and C3 to complete C3 in the southwest corner of 13th Street and Norfolk Avenue. This public hearing is continued from the March 4th, 2013 city council meeting, and it looks like, Tracy, you're all ready to go there.
I am. I'm here again.
Beth, can you turn on the projectors, please?
Well.
Thank you.
I'm Tracy Bittner. I'm here on behalf of Orange Development Incorporated. They are, and it's good to see you again. We were here two weeks ago, and we have some resolution of some issues, and are now asking to go ahead with the rezone. The, we're asking to rezone the southwest corner of 13th and Norfolk Avenue, and you can see on the plan there, the plan is to put in a CVS Pharmacy. There, the last time we were here, there was an issue from the Departments of Roads' analysis of the situation. CVS wanted the north access right at that median break. The Department of Roads commented that that wouldn't be the safest for Norfolk, and CVS then, we had to go back and ask for approval from CVS, and they did approve that, move the north access to the west there. You'll also see that there's west access over on 14th Street, and then east access from 13th Street. The, we have a change kind of to what we've asked for for rezoning, because we don't want to rezone more than we have to. So you'll see on that second sheet of paper, you have the subdivision plat that we'll go through the planning commission tomorrow, and we plan to subdivide into five lots. Lots one and two, we're asking be zoned C3. Lot five to stay R1, and lots three and four to stay R3. Lots three, lot four doesn't meet the square footage requirement for C3, and lot three is there because of that drainage ditch. And that's why we've gone five lots. So we don't want to, we don't want to rezone more than we need to, that's why we're keeping lot five residential, although we are changing that lot configuration to be more rectangle. The benefits of having the pharmacy in town are obvious. It's going to clean up that corner. We're planning on, we have purchase agreements signed with 11 lot owners. That's set to close in April at some point, as soon as everything comes through the city council, and, you know, those lot owners will be able to go out and buy other property. We'll probably see the hiring of local construction companies and other type services. I've had trash companies wanting to know who to contact to get, to bid, and it's just going to clean up that, that corner there, that area. So the consulting engineer, plane left a little late, so he was planning on being here, so if you have any specific questions, I can try to answer them, otherwise, he's on his way.
We can only hope the wind is helping him.
I know.
Counsel, any questions direct, or her?
Tracy, you wouldn't happen to know when CVS has built some of their other properties, what their, how their selection process went for their contractors, any of that? You got any information there?
I have no information about that.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions at all, counsel?
Just as a, and I'm not sure, Tracy, if this is a question for you, or for Dennis, or Trent, or maybe all three of you could be a trio and answer it. Just wanted to make sure that the ordinance that comes along, that the council's going to be considering, that doesn't yet have the benefit of the plat, so it's the lot, the meets and bounds description of all of the things that it has now, but the ordinance which is in here reflects the changes that Tracy just talked about with, with leaving those two lots, three and four.
If you look at the drawing, the meets and bounds description should be lots one and two, the white area excluding the yellow and the orange.
You mean if you look at the picture that's up here, the ordinance reflects the rest of it being changed to C3?
Correct.
So our ordinance is correct with what she's saying?
Correct.
Anything else at all? Counsel? All right. Thanks, Tracy. Okay, as this is a public hearing, and it is open, is there anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak in favor of, if you will? I'm going to ask you to come to the podium, state your name, address for us.
I'm not really in favor of, do I need to wait?
You want to state your name for us, if you would please, and where you're living?
My name is Stephanie Reitz, and I live at 1319 West Norfolk Avenue. The reason why I'm here today is because the property that I live in is one of the ones that will be taken down for the CVS Pharmacy. I wanted to speak to you folks here at the council about the situation that this has put me and my family in, and in order to understand that a little bit about myself, I'm a full-time college student at Northeast here. I'm going to be done with a college degree in Associate's of Graphic Design next spring. I work two part-time jobs, one as a tutor at Northeast, and one at the American Legion as a waitress and a bartender, and I'm 100% full-time single mom of two small kids. I have a five-year-old boy named Keaton and a three-year-old girl named Amber. Three and a half weeks ago, I was told by my landlord that I have until the end of March to find a new home and move. Since I rent, I didn't get the opportunity to speak with the company and make a deal and sell my property, because it's not technically mine, even though this has been my family's home for two and a half years. In the last three and a half weeks, I have been calling everybody I can think of, I have been looking everywhere, I have been searching not only in the city of Norfolk, but also in Hader, Pierce, Wayne, all the way out to Lee, Battle Creek, and Madison and everything, just trying to find anything at all that fits my family's needs in size and in budget. In this three weeks, I've been, I've spoken to Health and Human Services, and discovered that the only thing they can give me is a one-time-only credit for about $360 to help with rent. I talked to HUD, and they told me that I, the application process alone takes six weeks, and then after that, there's six months to a year waitlist before you even get any assistance. And I talked to low-income housing and apartments, and I don't qualify because of my credit score. So I've found three places so far that I've missed that have fit my needs. The first I missed by an hour to another renter. The second was rented out to a family friend before I even had a chance to look at it. And the third, just yesterday, I was told by the renters that they don't want to rent to me because they'd rather wait for a nice married couple. At this point in time, as of today, I have 13 days left to find a place to live, and I have nothing else to fall back on. I have no family in the area. My closest family lives in Minnesota. And at this point in time, I am beginning to fear for what is going to happen to me and to my kids and to my family if I can't find somewhere to go. So I'm begging you as a city council to not only consider the people that this is going to help in the future, but also consider the people that this is affecting right now. And it's not just me, there are other people in the building that I live in that are being put into situations. My neighbors downstairs are graduating in May, and they can't sign a year-long lease because they're all moving at the end of May, and they can't find anything for them either.
I think we all sit here and certainly understand what it is that you're up against. However, I'm going to ask that you too understand that this is private property, and certainly it is the choice of those property owners to make the right decision for themselves and for the future. It sounds to me like you've tried to make some great attempts there with Health and Human Services and some of those others. Could I suggest to you, it looks to me like maybe you need to take advantage of the one time, and at least give yourself a little more time with, if I understood you right, you said you had the ability to get, what, $360?
My, my issue isn't money, though. I have money to do it. The issue is the place, the thing that I, there's no housing available. There's no places available.
Yeah. Certainly, we understand that. That's, that's an issue across the entire city, and it's, it's not just yourself, as we have new residents trying to move in too. I can only hope that maybe our, our news folks that are here will put this as a part of their story, and maybe there'll be someone that, that you'll touch and understand that maybe to be able to find you a place with two small children, I know that's got to be a tough situation. I wish I could tell you that we, as a council, can tell you what and how and where to go with that, but we can't, or at least I can't. You know, if there are some, someone or is someone that might have suggestion, I'm certain they're going to sit down and have conversation with you, but again, please understand that what this council is up here to do is to make a decision on those private property owners, and something that certainly is, is good for the entire community. I understand, like I say, I sure understand your situation, and, you know, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts or ideas for, I'm sure open for, but again, I appreciate your coming before us. You've done a great job in explaining what the situation is, and again, we can hope that maybe there is someone that's heard what it is that you had to explain. All right. Put, yep, if you'll sign in there for us, too. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to come before us tonight and speak to this? In favor of or in opposition to? If not, then we will close this public hearing after we have a planning commission report, then for a planning, involve Beth.
The planning commission held a public hearing on February 20th, 2013, at the request of Don Pfizer, Orange Development, Inc., from, for a zoning change from R1, R3, C1, and C3 to C3 Central Business District, for property in the northwest corner of 13th Street and Norfolk Avenue. This project involves the purchase of 15 properties along 13th Street and Norfolk Avenue for the erection of a CVS Pharmacy. There are issues with the rezone that must be resolved prior to the council's approval, and the approval of the traffic study that, by the Nebraska Department of Roads, and the change from the regional legal description, so the parcel can remain residential on several locations. The planning commission recommends approval on a contingency approval of a seven-to-zero vote.
Okay. I did say I was going to close this after the report, so Tracy, being it is still open, do you have somebody that you did want to reference, or no?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on? All right. We'll close then the public hearing. And I would look for, or ask for consideration of ordinance number 5246, approving the request. First, we need to take it off the table, don't we? My phone, I need him.
I'll make the motion. Second.
We have a motion with a second to remove from the table consideration for ordinance number 5246, if you will please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. With that, can I have consideration of approval of ordinance 5246, approving the request of Don Pfizer, Orange Development, for the zoning change as heard, changing it all to C3 in the southwest corner of 13th Street and Norfolk Avenue?
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5246.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion at all? If not, short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
With that, if you will please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5246 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, just to expedite the process, I would move that we suspend the rules and consider ordinance number 5246 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. Any further discussion on that at all? If not, I will, I will ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5246 carries on second and third readings.
Okay, and then we will move on to consideration of ordinance number 5245, approving the zone district change at the request of Moda Ambaji Incorporated, from C3 and R1 to C3. Again, this ordinance was tabled at the March 4th meeting, and so if I could have a motion to take this off of the table?
I'll make the motion. Second.
We have a motion with a second that we remove from the table and ask for consideration of ordinance number 5245. And we do have to vote on, removing it from the table, I'm sorry, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and now could I have consideration of approval of ordinance 5245?
Good.
Oh, at this point? All right. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Jeff, if you will.
Those who don't know me, I'm Jeff Aroda. I'm an attorney, and I'm assisting Budget Inn with regard to this change to the zoning map. At this time, the, although this seems to be what we consider fairly straightforward request to correct the zoning map, Budget Inn thought it would be advisable and maybe helpful for the council if we tabled this matter until the April 15th meeting. Budget Inn, at this time, is in negotiations with its insurance company, and they would have a better feel for what they want to do with this particular lot once that matter gets resolved. They have a, a company out of Kansas City that's kind of ramrodding that negotiation process, and they indicated that additional 30 days, they'd be in a better position to know exactly what they want to do with the structure and the lot itself. So the court, or the council feels it would be helpful to know more than we'd requested. You simply table this until the April 15th meeting date.
Okay. With Jeff in front of us, does anyone have any questions of him? I think the explanation is pretty clear. So with that, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. So with that being said, we were looking for consideration of ordinance number 5245. However, I would say we're looking for a motion then, too.
I'll make the motion to table. Second.
We have a motion with a second to table to April, the April 15th meeting.
Excuse me, table to the April 15th council meeting?
Okay. To the April 15th meeting. All right. Any further discussion on that?
No discussion.
No discussion? Let's vote. Okay?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Thanks again, Jeff, for being here. Appreciate that. All right. Next would be consideration of approval of an agreement with the Norfolk Softball Association, Nebraska Nonprofit Corporation, allowing the operation of the concession stand at Tahoe-Zucca Park adult complex from April 15th, 2013, until October 15th, 2013.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining from the voting on this matter.
Okay. Do I have someone that wants to make a motion here?
I'll introduce the motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion with a second for consideration of approval of the red agreement. Some discussion on this, or questions?
This is fairly standard to what we've done the last few years, I'm assuming, if I remember right.
Would that be a true statement, counsel?
True.
True. All right.
Good.
All right. So that being said, it looks like everyone's comfortable. Let's vote.
All councilmen, members voting in the affirmative. Council member Faust abstaining, motion carries.
All right. And finally, is consideration of approval of moving forward with the final plan for Central Park improvements as presented tonight by Melinda, the program coordinator for the Norfolk Arts Center. I have a motion for that consideration.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
All right. A motion with a second. Melinda, you're on.
Is this actually? It's not. It's not on? No. About one. My name's Melinda Cozal. I'm from the Norfolk Arts Center. I live at 1011 North 7th Street here in Norfolk.
We're trying to make sure everybody's seeing this, and if you'll bear with us a minute. Yep. I think we'll ask you all to turn your eyes this way.
Okay. The last time I was here, I brought our concepts for the park for, for projects, including a library nook, a butterfly garden, renovating the existing stage, as well as a mural on the bathroom walls. Today, I've brought more detailed plans for three of the four projects, the, the mural, the stage, and the butterfly garden. The library nook is actually going to be done in the fall, so I'll bring that back when we get closer to that time. So, and then with that, I'll be asking for approval of each of those three components of the larger Central Park project.
Okay.
So I figured I would start with the butterfly garden.
Melinda, before you get started, for some of those that are in the audience, you might want to just explain a little bit the process of this, where you are, and that it's the youth that are, how that, about.
Sure, sure.
Short description?
Sure. We've been working on this for the year. We are partnering with the Norfolk Junior High School to get students involved with this process. They'll be directly involved in some of these projects, as well as basically learning sort of the process of developing, developing a project, how to work within their community, and to be able to engage in the civic process so that they can have those skills when they want to accomplish things in the future. And so we've selected projects that not only go well with those students and what their needs are, but also ones that would just be great components to beautify the park and make it a really great usable space for the community again. So, so the butterfly garden is our first project, and we're hoping that this will be a great outdoor classroom to be used by the junior high school students, as well as Christ Lutheran students, and really anybody who wants to come and utilize it. Nebraska Game and Parks has been an integral with helping us develop this, and are excited to be able to bring students into this garden and teach them about, not only the biological aspects, but about the act of actually caring for the garden and developing it for a community. And as well as the students, it's also a good interactive environment for anybody who wants to go out and enjoy the park. We're looking at this space next to the tennis court, and we're hoping to develop a 10-by-16, 10-by-16 garden, roughly, and this is the layout that we're thinking of. We're looking at that space not only because it's a nice wide-open area, but it's out of the way of most of the foot traffic, so it'll be able to stay maintained a little better without a lot of people kind of going in and around, just the regular crowds. So the layout is this four kind of quadrant thing with, you know, paths dividing it, so people can kind of walk in and around and see all the different elements in there. And each of those four quadrants is going to be relatively similar. There may be some different positioning of rocks and just other things like that, but they'll basically have some of the same plants. And we've been selecting plants that are native, that are low maintenance, also choosing perennials to avoid as much maintenance as possible, and paying attention to those plants that will attract and feed those butterflies, caterpillars, and other pollinators. We've had local gardeners, local institutions, nurseries donating materials and plants and their time to help make sure that this garden is planned correctly and will come to be the garden we expect it to be. We've also set up a schedule with the science classes through local gardening clubs and just people that live in that neighborhood that want to be involved, especially in the first year, to help take care of the garden, make sure it's well-watered so that it can grow properly. Other than that, we just expect the same maintenance that, you know, you use on the lawn anyway, so there's nothing there that's going to require anything outside of that normal maintenance. So, are there any questions about the garden? It's a pretty straightforward.
Linda, what, the proposed path that, that cuts it into four quadrants, is that going to be, what are you looking, pavers or concrete?
I think mulch primarily. Is that right? But we, we are looking to put some larger rocks just kind of in and amongst the plants, so there's just kind of different little places for the bugs to land and stuff, but...
Okay.
Anything else? And I guess, I don't know, do I ask for the approval, or? Or how does that?
Do you want to go through it all, Melinda, and then we'll come back and have the discussion with the council?
Okay. No, that's fine. I think that's fine. Okay. We'll move on to the next one. Okay. So the stage, I previously brought this illustration of kind of our initial concept for the stage cover. We have an engineer that's finishing up the official plans right now, but I do have some, oh, no. Some sketches that'll help give you the idea of the content and ultimately what it's going to be without the very, very detailed portions. So the, what we're going to do is we're going to build this cover. It's not going to interfere with the existing platform at all. It's going to come out from about four feet on both sides, five in the front, and I think almost three in the back, so that it'll be on posts that are embedded into the ground with concrete. We're planning to use things like steel beams, tubing, iron, and generally metal in its entirety because it's just more sustainable. It's, it'll be easier to work with, and it's material that we'll be able to have access to very well. And then up at the top, I can't really point on there, I guess, up at the top is where our movie screen's going to be attached, so that we can do outdoor movies in the summer. That'll be removed at the end of the season, so that we won't have to kind of deal with the wear and tear of weather, and we'll put that away, so it'll stay in good shape. We're also planning to add some lighting to the upper corners. If you look at the drawing on the right, you know, kind of in those corner areas, this lighting is going to be good not only to allow for some night performances, but it's also going to add an extra element of safety in that park after dark, so. And we are going, we do have an electrician that's committed to doing an electrical survey to make sure that we, we install and take care of everything appropriately. The platform, we have kind of, we've got underneath it, and we found it to be in terrific structural shape, so there's not really any concern of whether or not it's going to collapse under all of the new awesome events that we're going to have there. So we don't really have to do anything in terms of making sure that, to modify that. The only modification that we're looking at doing is taking off the railings on the west side, which I would also call the front side, and that allows for better visibility for performances. Right now, if you look at it, you'll see a bar in front of a performer's face, so that'll make that much more, much better. And then to accommodate the fact that there would now be a drop, we've planned this large slope, and you can see that on the right, that comes out to the, from the very top of the stage, out, I think we thought about 40 feet, to give an appropriate slope, not only so there's not a drop-off, but it allows handicap access. there's not a drop-off, but it allows handicap access, so it takes care of the ADA requirements. And it also has the added benefit of extra performance space, so. So, that's how we have tackled that problem there. And we've already got a solid lineup of events that we want to put in the stage, so we'll make sure it's put to good use right away, and it'll be well worth it, I promise. Are there any questions about the stage?
You kind of touched on the electrical a little bit. Will there be upgrades to the electrical to allow more different kinds of entertainment?
I think that if we, when we do the survey, we'll see what the needs are, and if we need to upgrade, that's what we're going to take care of. We have made some accommodations, or we're planning with the structure of it to be able to allow musicians or performers to bring in their own light kit to put up and to plug in. But if it deems that we need to do upgrades, or it's not going to be, you know, smart to continue it, we're going to do what's the right thing to make it work the best. We don't want to just do it halfway, we want to make sure it's right.
Once the structure's built, we got, you know, the nice top over, what if we get some wind or some hail, it does some damage to it, who's responsible for that then, for the repair?
Well, I know that some of the ways we're planning is to alleviate the problems with wind, and maybe Jimmy can kind of help me with that. Maybe not, I don't know.
And I kind of did some advisory stuff more than anything else on it, and I know the structural engineer that they have looking at is looking at doing a structural element that's basically out of tube steel and members provided by ballcraft at either discount or whatever rate they decide to do. And then, the other thing, the sketch here shows that there is what's commonly referred to as a PTO roof. That's a single ply membrane roof that goes over the top of the decking, so it doesn't, you don't get that tinny sound when you get heavy rains and/or hail that way. So, all the members that are going up there are relatively, you know, is anything hail-proof? No, but it stands up a whole lot better to it than anything else that way, so. The majority of the members are structural steel members, it appears, and it's similar to the structure that's down at Tahazuka Park at the, you know, in the basic element, similar to the element, or the structure that's at Tahazuka Park, the one that Ballcraft did, what, 10, 12 years ago now, so.
I understand the engineering of it, but what if a tree falls on it? I guess, I guess I'm asking who's responsible for fixing it?
Does that like go under the umbrella of our city insurance, or do we have to have special insurance?
I'm going to let you know the address, then I'm going to assume it's on our property, so.
Shane, I raised some of those same questions when I saw this on the agenda, and the response that I had is that that hadn't just yet been worked out.
We haven't necessarily feathered that out, we wanted to get, make sure that council was supportive of the conceptual plans that Melinda's presenting here, and then she's firming up with the council, to make sure that there aren't any serious logistical questions, or serious conceptual questions, I should say. The logistical questions, we're going to have to work out with staff and Melinda's group and the folks that are involved in it, because there are those kind of questions, there are insurance and design and safety kind of questions, and code enforcement kind of questions that we're going to have to flesh out and make sure that are accomplished, and, you know, they're all legitimate, and we're going to have to follow the code and make sure it's correct. So, I think Melinda's well aware of that, that those kind of questions are yet to come and be taken care of. You know, we'll have to, we'll have to make that decision, who's going to be responsible for that. My gut tells me if it's on city property, and we have this kind of, and we're bought in conceptually to it, that the mayor and council have to consider that, may have to consider that as part of the city infrastructure from construction forward.
From a historical standpoint, when Nucor built the picnic shelter at Tahazuka, we've assumed the liability for that structure, so I see it being consistently in this application.
And as long as we prove that we're taking everything we can into making it structurally sound, and, I mean, we'll do absolutely everything to make you guys feel comfortable with it.
Sure. You know, those, you know, the biggest thing that we'd like to see from a staff perspective on these type of, type of great ideas that come, periodically come to the city, is, once it's complete, you know, we have to make sure that the group involved is willing to maintain it with us, at least, you know, as far as the flowering and the planning and all the maintenance that goes along with it. There is an element of additional work from our park staff that Pat is well aware of, and has been at the table with Melinda's group from the start. Those kind of things, if we, if we can invigorate the team to have some long-term commitment to those types of initiatives that go along with the project. The initiator team goes away, then obviously, we have some, we have to maintain it and move forward as a staff, and then we have to buy resources for it. But this particular situation is beautification of an existing park, so, you know, we do those kind of things, Pat and his staff do those kind of things normally anyway, in some sort of rotation, rotation cycle, so. We're, the staff is aware of many of those commitments.
I think that the other part of that is that, at the end of the time, it ought to be, it just ought to be clear as to where those, where the lines of demarcation are, if there are any, or who's responsible for it, and I think the, you know, the Memorial Park project last year with the, with the April hail and all of those kinds of things also indicates that when you're doing this kind of, when you're doing this kind of thing with the way that I've understood it, you've also got the issues of talking about, when does it become the city's responsibility, when's the builder's risk in place, and, you know, what happens if you've got not only the problems after the fact, but you've got the problems while it's still being constructed, which, you know, was part of the issue down at, down at the park. So, those are yet details, as I understand it, to be addressed and as...
And staff's committed, if, I mean, just so the mayor and council know, we're committed to fleshing those out, if you give, if you are inclined to give the approval tonight and then, you know, conceptually to the plan. There was some questions left to be answered, I believe, from the initial plan presentation to tonight's final plan, but the fine details is what we're talking about, we'll have to flesh out if the approval's granted.
Good question, councilman, file. Any other?
I would like to say, you know, you talked about liability, one thing they are doing, though, it's by improving this stage, is they're taking away a 35-inch drop all the way around there, you know, and so I would think liability-wise, getting this up to code with ADA standards is a good thing in the long term, so.
Good point. Very good point. All right, keep going, Melinda.
Okay. All right, here we go, guys. So, we are going to make this bathroom look so much better. So, we've, there's been a lot of questions about the mural. It's the project I'm most excited about, and it's got the most questions, but that's great, because I love that we're discussing it. So, I just wanted to talk about why we're deciding to go the way we are with the mural, and maybe that'll kind of answer some of your questions ahead of time. This is a photo of our artist Gerard, who's here today. And the idea, the concern is, if those of you who don't know, is that we want to do this in a street art style. And, you know, any type of art in history, whether it's Monet or Andy Warhol, it comes out of this thing that society experiences and feels and is thinking about, and street art is really no different. And when it came out, I mean, it's been around since the beginning of time, but when it really started to come out in like the 1970s, it was kind of a way of giving voices to artists and people who were sort of left out, because the mainstream was sort of dictating whose voices should be heard and how they should be heard and that sort of thing, and so this type of art was a way for those people to get that voice out there. And when we're working with junior high school students, these seventh and eighth graders who are so brilliant and innovative, and they have so much emotion and passion, and they want that to go into the things that make them feel good about themselves, and for making them feel like they are a positive part of their community, I mean, this is exactly the idea, is to give those kids a voice. And we do so much for the little kids in town, and we pay so much attention to high school sports and activities, but these junior high kids are kind of left in their own little world, where they're kind of trying to figure stuff out, and we sort of go towards the negative sometimes of like, oh, what are they going to do now? But, but these are the voices that are so important, and so this type of art is connected to that idea of bringing those soft voices out and about, so. That's one of the reasons we're going for this style. Another thing about street art is that it really came about as a way to uplift communities, especially those that have been left behind as new neighborhoods are built, and new developments, and new playgrounds, and all of those types of things. And so, they would use art as a way of identifying themselves through visual culture. And so, knowing that, you know, Central Park is our oldest park, and it's sort of, you know, been a little left behind as new parks get built up, it really fits into that idea that this is a way that we can bring attention to this community, that neighborhood, and show that we really value it as a part of our city. And so, for those reasons, I mean, this is exactly the right type of art, the type of project to do for this location. And I chose Gerard because he's exactly right for this project. I mean, what he does is he works with young students and members of the community, he works in schools, he's worked with nonprofits like Girls Inc., he also works very closely with the city of Omaha, he's part of several neighborhood associations, he even is commissioned by the Omaha Police Department to work on a mural. And he is all about using that community-mindedness to bring people's voices out and to bring real identity to community. Whether or not it's with someone who doesn't have a voice, or someone has a voice in a completely unrelated way to art, it's bringing them together to understand who they are, who they are as part of their community, and what they can do in their community, and what that community can ultimately be. And so, it's about supporting that self-esteem of Norfolk itself. And his style, you know, this street art style, it really captures the vibrancy of what our community in that neighborhood can be, and it helps, the abstractness of it helps kind of explain that emotion a little better than, you know, more figurative, traditional styles would. Locally, he's worked with our Zone kids, the Zone, they had incredible experience with him at River Point Arts Festival, they were so excited to be able to get a more global idea of what they could express. He's, I mean, I can't even tell you how many times he's worked with kids and had such a positive impact, I mean, there's a picture right up there of him doing just that. I wanted to show you some other examples of his work, I know you guys didn't get to see a whole lot, but I wanted to show you that what can come out of this piece is, it could really be a broad range of things, and while maybe the focus is that it's graffiti because of the type of paint and the type of surface, you guys can see that, I mean, he does murals, these are literally murals. The one in the upper left is from a restaurant in Omaha, the one below that is a workshop project for the Jazelin. Some more paintings of his, too. So, I mean, the style of street art can mean a whole lot of different things, and so I want you guys to kind of think about the possibilities of what it could be, instead of thinking about this one thing that we don't really want it to be. And so, the really great thing about this mural project is not only that it has a huge educational benefit, I mean, Gerard's going to be working with the junior high students for a week, they are going to be the ones to help him conceptualize what's going to be in that mural, and how it's going to look, and what's going to come from it. So, he's giving them a huge experience about really formulating a huge part of their community. So, it has a strong educational benefit to it. But this type of art is an asset to our community in terms of economic development, in terms of tourism, it brings a whole other level of how we view, you know, diversity in arts and culture that's appealing to other people who are considering moving here. And with the hopes that the success of this project will lead to others, that could be a really tremendous, tremendous project in this town, and could gain us a lot of notoriety and a lot of respect by other towns as well. So, I'll let you guys ask me questions, I guess.
You do have passion.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it.
That's what I got to work with.
Melinda, are we looking at a mural a year, or how do you see this changing and evolving in the future?
Well, this, particularly in Central Park, is the first one we want to do. Gerard has an incredible concept to potentially do at least four other murals in town, working with either people who own buildings that want to do it, or working with the city, he wants to work with local artists, students, business people, anybody, and kind of pulling ideas together to create sort of a large-scale public art project, that each mural connects to the other, and when you see them all together, it tells a story of who we are as a city. That, I mean, that's the part that really stands out in terms of the tourism, and especially for bringing in people who want to live here, it just shows that, you know, with the community working together to create something really incredible. And that, we hope to, you know, continually do more murals as people are interested and want to do one. I mean, I could do public art every week for the rest of my time here, you know, and we could do a lot of great things. So, we don't have a set schedule, it's as they're able to be done.
So, the question would be, we're hoping to impact the junior high kids?
Yes.
And without doing additional murals in the future, impacting them would be just, they would be able to go over there and look at it? You would assume that, I would assume anyway, that you would want to have a hands-on type of a thing, so they can have that, so they can be subjected to the beauty of art and get it in their heads a little bit, so.
Right. And I guess, are you asking, are we going to do a different mural in that same location every year, is that what you're asking?
Well, I, yeah, I guess you could, you could say that, but also, how do, going forward, how do you anticipate impacting the kids, because at the end of the day, this is really what that's all about.
Right. We are planning to do a variety of projects with the kids, with the junior high, over the next however many years they want to keep doing it, and they may not all be literally about fine arts. You know, they may be more about performance, they may be different things. It happens to work out that Central Park is right across from the junior high, so it's really conducive to this project right now. That doesn't mean to say that they can't get involved in other murals we do in other years, and there are a lot of, you know, other artists that if they're interested in doing things like that, I mean, we could put together an infinite amount of projects, absolutely. Are we necessarily going to do a mural every single year? I would say probably not, just because we want to try to keep it fresh, so that we're not just trying to churn out the same project every year, because that's what makes projects tend to kind of get, let go after a while, because they tend to get boring, I guess you could say. But we are intending to work with those students on something every year. I don't know if that answers your question. Okay.
Melinda, some of the questions that I've had asked are kind of on the same lines, are you going to make the bathrooms have portable, or are you going to put it right on the cement? You know, so if you had portable, you could unbol it, put a new canvas up and go at it the next year. They also wondered, you're talking about the junior high, are you going to involve the high schools and the college, because the college has a huge program out there, they wondered if you were going to involve those people also? And a lot of people are asking if any of our local talent is going to be considered, are you going to talk to the talent that we have in Norfolk, get their ideas, get their input, and ever use them also? So, those are some of the questions I'm starting to get from the public, I just wondered.
Sure. Well, I'll kind of go through them in order. As far as a temporary piece, really, we're looking, I would say no, I mean, we'd like it to be permanent. I don't know if we're able to make sure that we can get a new piece every year. So, and we really prefer the permanence of it, it shows that we're committed to what we're doing, and that we're not just like, well, we'll keep it up for a year and then we'll keep going. Because the work will be, I mean, I know the work will be beautiful and impactful, and to keep it up there, I think, is the right choice to do. So, I think that answers your first question. The second one, are we going to involve other schools? We are focusing primarily on the junior high right in this particular project. We have asked, I have reached out to Christ Lutheran about doing some other work within the projects, and I'm waiting to hear back, so we're not excluding anybody, if that's... So we're not excluding anybody if that's one of the questions. Really anybody, any school, any faculty member, any student who wants to be involved in some way in any of those projects is welcome, absolutely welcome to be a part of it. With the extended murals that we're considering doing around the city, that will involve many more schools, high school and college students and members of the community as well. With this one particularly, we're focusing on the junior high students. And then the third question, what our concept is for the entire project, we definitely want to bring in, have local artists come work with it, develop their identity in a mural and have one particularly, you know, particularly maybe about them specifically as well. So I'm always open to working with local artists. I want them to come and ask me to do a project. I'm happy to work with any local artists that want to be involved, absolutely. I would never turn one away, absolutely not.
I think both of their comments kind of had some of the same tone that I, we've had some discussions and the thing is to keep this perpetual, you know? Once you have this big explosion of activity at the beginning and the project's done, so to speak, how do you keep those kids engaged going forward? And I thought, when Rob asked his question, I thought with the stage being complete, maybe the art that you're doing next year has to deal with the stage or even some performances or something like that. So I think it'll segue well into it, but that's just one of my concerns is, it's great that you're engaging that group of people.
Yeah.
That are going through life changes and hormonal changes and it's a pretty, pretty difficult time in their life.
Right.
Give them focus so that they can move forward, but that's one thing that I am struggling with, how we keep them active after the, after the big explosion.
I agree. I mean, there's nothing worse than saying like, hey, we really want to do something with you. Thanks, that was awesome, I'll see you later. You know, that's, we don't want that to happen. We do, we, we have done so much with little kids and there's a lot that high school gets and we really believe that the junior high deserves so many great opportunities. And like I was saying before, we may not do a mural, we may not replicate what we're doing this year with them next year, but we want to try to integrate these project-based learning ideas with them. I mean, before we settled on Central Park, we threw out a ton of different things we thought about, like, you know, having them develop a publication. There's a school that actually has their students involved in city planning, so that's an idea if you guys are interested as well. There's, you know, there are, there are an infinite number of projects and anybody in the community, business owners, community service people who have ideas for great project learning opportunity, I am all about it. Anything that we can do is great. And I, I'm going to try to keep the same momentum I have this year, every single year, until I class and I can't do it anymore. But anybody who knows me knows that I don't do something and then just let it go. I keep going at it, obviously you can tell, so.
Anyone else with?
So we're going to have a opportunity to visit this again, more of a final plan, is that correct?
I'm hoping today's the day.
I think that's what we talked about a little earlier. Beg pardon?
I'm hoping today's the day. We won't know exactly what that mural's going to look like because it's going to be in part developed by those students.
And that's, that's not, that's not my, my concern because I'm sure it'll look fine.
Okay.
Where I was getting to was, the one concern that I do have is having a better understanding of how this will impact next year's kids and the kids after that and the kids after that. It may not be a mural, it may be something different, it may be another something.
Right.
And I know that it's going to be difficult for you to sit down and say, in 2014, we're going to do this, in 2015, we're going to do this.
Yeah.
But I wonder if you would be able to outline it a little more formally? Give us a better idea of what the next two or three years would hold for those kids?
Okay. Well, like you said, I can't exactly decide because it all has to do a lot with what the junior high school's curriculum will allow as well. So every year, I think it's going to be sort of an approach like, here's some ideas we have, what's going to work with you? And it also depends on what teachers are interested in doing too. None of what we have planned is ever intended to tell teachers what they should be doing in their classroom or what, that we want you to do this project for us. It's not about that. So when I initially came to the junior high about this, I said, this is the idea we have. Any of you who are interested, come talk to me, we'll figure out some projects, we'll make this happen. And honestly, I kind of foresee that being the case every year. It's hard for me to say, well, next year, we're going to have the kids publish a magazine or something without knowing what kind of businesses will be in town and what kind of, if the journalism teachers even want to get involved. So it's really, it is hard to plan a few years ahead. If the question is, how do we keep engaging the students with the project we're doing this year? Like I was saying, the Game and Parks Commission is going to be taking those science classes out every October to get the garden ready for frost and every spring to get it ready for bloom, and that's going to be continual thing every year. The stage, we hope that the music departments at the school will use that stage as much as they possibly can. And the mural will be, you know, there as, you know, a study for not only art students but any student, any adults as well. And we hope that the, the fact that we are doing it helps kind of motivate that desire to keep doing stuff like that. So I hope it doesn't only engage the students every year, but I hope it engages the community every year.
Well, I hope it does too, and like the mayor said, you certainly have a passion for it and I feel pretty comfortable that that'll remain kindled for years to come, so thank you very much.
Melinda, I do remember when we first met, you know, one of the things you talked about was, and you referenced it a little bit tonight, was working with some of the other local artists. Does it need to remain, I mean, obviously right now, we're talking about your efforts with the junior high, but maybe, you know, maybe it can go further to become more outside the classroom as well, to be some of those, I know you talked about some of the strong folks here within this community that are artistic and, like you say, not necessarily in maybe the same way George is here, but there's other ways of art.
Right.
So I think that's going to be your challenge, but again, you are up to it. I have no, no doubt in that. So I really do, I feel you probably, I know you will want to take this further. And I think you've done a great job of presenting and providing us with the information that I think we've asked for. I do appreciate the fact that there's, there are some concerns and as well, we talked about that. It's the upkeep and the continuation of whatever it is that you do.
Right.
So I think you've remained constant in your voice in saying, we'll see that through.
And we're committed to, not only us, but volunteers who have come forward and wanted to be a part of that park and make sure, people who live in that neighborhood, I mean, alone, want to help take care of that park. And so we're going to be there consistently, making sure things are still in good shape, making sure there's nothing that's defaced. And we plan on being very attentive to that park and make sure that the whole project goes well.
I guess one thing that we haven't talked too much about, but I see this as a baby step, step to get your message and your passion out to the mainstream, outside of the four walls of our neighbor to the south.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that'll be a great, a great asset to the community.
Yeah. For more than just the building.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the point should be lost here. This is a great idea and it's a great project and you're to be commended for the work you've put into it and the community partners that you've pulled together in this. And I think you'll find that the involvement will be contagious among the youth. And thank you for bringing this to us. It's a civic-minded project that engages our youth and helps restore historic park in our community, so thanks.
Any other comments or questions or? So what you're asking for us, from us tonight, would be that we're going to give you our approval to say, go forth.
Yes. And of course, I will tell you everything I'm doing. I will keep you up to date.
Of course you will.
I will.
I know.
As soon as new updates come in, you'll be the first to know, of course. But yeah, I would, I would very much like an approval to begin making the work happen.
Well, first of all, I think we need to commend you too for having a couple that have come forward tonight, I believe from outside our Norfolk area here in support of you. And I got to believe that you must have full confidence in her as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. All right, okay.
I'm his biggest fan.
And mayor and council, that, part of that recommendation, if you will, is that staff stays involved with this project as well, if that permits, so.
Absolutely.
You and he are going to be tight, Melinda.
What's that?
You and he will be tight over the next months, but that's okay.
I like the state and that's cool.
All right. If no further discussion, we'll let her sit down and council will have some discussion or some action. What's the thoughts here? Are we ready to make a motion for approval?
Make the motion for approval.
We have a motion on the floor, okay? No further discussion? Then I think we'll vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right. Thank you again, you did a great job and thanks for being here tonight. As well, this is the evening for a public comment, period. So if there's anyone in our audience tonight that wants to come forward and speak to this council, obviously there is no action that can occur, but if there's something on your mind, we'd sure like to hear it. Seeing no one? We're adjourned. Thanks for being here tonight.